Slowly on the way to the podium. We want to put in minutes here, has everybody got a chance to keep looking at the minutes from the last meeting of December 18th? Any other questions regarding the meeting? If there's more questions, I can make a note of the rules and then time check them. Fall in favor? Aye. First order. Walker Terrace. Subdivision. All right, so returning to the app. So basically, you have a public hearing, just to go back and update what you really had. So basically, last time we were here, there was a question regarding that we wanted to have the septic in the sewer identified to make sure that you weren't close to the neighbors in the septic in the sewer. Okay, we're basically updating your map, okay, indicating that it doesn't well, and we wanted to make sure that we're good. So this is the well, right? So that's basically 148 of the proposed stuff, right? Granted, this is kind of where we're supposed to be, so this is really, really well proposed here, so that was more than covered. So we wanted to make sure that you originally addressed the house back on our copy here. We're just kind of more down in the hole, and there is about to also be the public separation. So. Anybody else that's got questions on this? Before we open the public hearing. All right, we're going to open the public hearing, but let me read the rules of the public hearing. And just so as a note here, this will also apply for our next public hearing, so I'm not going to read the rules twice again. All right? All who wish to speak to the board must be signed in on the sign machine. Please stand up sodium and only speak if you have the before. Identify yourself on speaking, name, address, municipality. Speak slowly, clearly, and loud so the board can hear you. Address comments only to the board. Comment only on the application before the board. Quickly, because the floor is limited to three minutes. Speaking is limited to one person. There will be no donation at times, only one person speaks at a time, and no interrupting of the speaker. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. You might have got the top. Thank you, Sharon. It's kind of a sad thing to see the farmland is all divided up, especially since, you know, Saratoga County is going to lose some, perhaps a couple, as it has been burned. But I understand that it has, has to be done. That being said, I only have a couple of concerns, like maybe perhaps where the driveway is going due to the fact that I operate three houses next to the property. The other thing that I can tell you is that I'm not really 100% sure why, but I have a hand dug, I have two hand dug wells that are in northeast corner of my property. Over the past couple of years, the recovery rates of those wells have slowed from three to four hours down to probably like a day, day and a half, making them basically almost non-perishable. And I don't know what. The other concern that I might have, like I said, was just the driveway, where is the driveway or this proposed property is going to be?
Where it is now. There's, there's the driveway, I think it's on the left side. I'm just wondering.
It's on the east, unless?
Yeah, so, so if your house is, it's over here on this very.
On the west side?
Yeah.
If perhaps, I understand that, you know, you're in the excavating business, oh, sorry. I would just ask that the planning board maybe write something up that the roadway not next to me, if a lot of sand is going to be removed in order for, to do this construction project, that the driveway, that's to be not reused and the terrace is operating under more construction costs. That's it, other than that, I have.
There's no construction.
Yeah. Right, but eventually, whoever buys this building lot, obviously is going to build a house.
It would probably be difficult to structure.
Right. Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. If perhaps the sand needs to be moved around, because unfortunately, that's why the terraces had to get the mining permit in the first place for how bad.
But the mine is done in that area.
Yeah, I under, I understand that.
Sorry.
I understand that the mining is done, and it's over, and it's finished. That was originally, you know, that was supposed to be reclaimed as well. But if there's a construction project going on, there's still a considerable amount of sand, you know, available. I just, I would like to avoid any problems, so. The only concern I have is I use a lot of water from my well. If it's, if it's brack, I'd like to get it a little concerned. Thank you. Other than that, I have no problem. Anybody else? No? We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, is there any other further questions for? Let's go through the seat for one more. You want to read?
I'll give her some time there.
So what I can give all these other.
Okay, part two. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect the existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fail to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact public-private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, i.e. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or given health?
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on to the next section, to make some action, I would just like to read again for the record here from the Saratoga County Planning Board. A proposed two-lot subdivision, 29th and 7th Avenue to create seven acre lots, same thinning years, and a 22 acre lot with distinct improvements. Although, tax grant number 182-2111 received from the town of Saratoga Planning Board on November 17th, 2024, reviewed by Saratoga County Planning Board on November 1st. A decision, no significant county-wide or inner-community impact, and this was signed by Jeffrey Williams, planner. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minor subdivision based on the application. Thank you, Lord, a second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Are they opposed? No? Okay. Minor subdivision. All right. All right, moving on. We want to be doing a public hearing here tonight. So Michael Gibbonhome, Boat and RV Condo LLC, Route 38, Route 9P, Saratoga Springs, New York, Representative Brian Sipperly, Bertie Engineer. Before we get started here, Brian, let me, let me just read a few things in the record to sort of get. Thank you, I just want to basically read this from the Saratoga County Planning Board. It's December 30th, we have to receive this as an email on January 2nd. A 12,40,356 square feet, two-story, single-story storage facility below Route 9P, mobile vehicle storage on a closed merge parcel, 12.1 acre location, New York State Route 9P. Received from the town of Saratoga Planning Board on November 18th, 2024. Additional updated materials were received from the town Planning Board on December 9th, 2024. Reviewed by Saratoga County Planning Board on December 19th, 2024. Decision, additional information/incomplete application. The Saratoga County Planning Board reviewed the above referenced project and requesting additional information needed to provide an order to complete the board's review of the project. The material provided with the submission in the town Planning Board in the decade at the SWIP Plan and Infiltration Stormwater Management System was being reviewed by the town engineer. Due to the potential impact of New York State Route 9P, verification should be provided by the TED, the town engineer, indicating approval of the stormwater management system. In addition, the project details in application indicated that the review is ongoing with New York State DOT. Verification should be provided by the proposed conceptual layout is accepted and will not cause a significant county-wide or inner-community impact on New York State Route 9P. Okay, this is Jason Kemper, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Just to follow up on that, okay? On their request, Ken Martin basically submitted. Got this straight here. All right, so on January 6th, I'm following up to the county's request, okay? Ken Martin basically submitted a letter stating that KD Martin Engineering, PLLC, completed RVU of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan dated November 2024, submitted by Bertie Engineering, DPC, November 4th, 2024, and on November 11th. It appears that the SWIP meets or exceeds all requirements for the GPA 030-001 Speedy's General Permit for Stormwater Discharge with Construction Activity. Okay, so that part of the county's request has been completed, as well as the MS4 request here, which is dated 1/20/25. This is the MS Stormwater Prevention Plan acceptance form, and this was accepted by our MS4 Coordinator of the town of Saratoga. Also today, I received an email forward, forward to me by Brian Sipperly, okay? And this is regarding correspondence to the New York State Department of Transportation regarding Route 9P here. It says here, Dear Brian, the department conceptually approves the divided commercial driveway for Boat and RV Condo, New York State 9P, with the covenant caveat, excuse me, that the directional flow be reversed. So basically, this information will be submitted to the Saratoga County for their meeting on February 20th. I just wanted to put that in there for the record. Brian, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, good to see you again this evening. I think the chairman kind of covered a lot of the updates since we saw you last in December. We had in Penning County, a front of more meetings at that time, we couldn't move forward, the county was unable to make a determination that would allow the board to take further action. We had also started to schedule a public hearing for January and conduct super, and so kind of here we are. The major sailing and updates were generally just back, we were using this last remaining time to iron out the driveway arrangement with DOT. And if I may, I'll put up the plan. The chairman, you noted the, the change to the plan is just going to be, we're going to put the directional arrows and the, the direction on the site. This thing's going to give it out of here, the back leg of it. Yeah, I'm going to hold it right now, and I'll turn it to the public, but we received that feedback this morning, we didn't reverse the flow, so the board you're looking at what's already been on record. But the key here is, is we were proposing the north driveway entrance to, you know, have a one-way directional flow around the site clockwise. To be honest, the DOT policy for a commercial divided highway has me split, and even when you're driving, you normally don't enter it on the right. We did that to kind of favor the boat buddies and not have them drive around. But that was really DOT's only concern, just flip it to be more compliant with the design policies and highway manual. And so we did that, it doesn't change the operation of the site. You know, really what it does is it just provides like slightly less level of service to your boat buddy client, because you just have to enter it here to get to here. Not a big deal at all. So I just want to stress to the board that really no plan changes, no changes to the SWIP, there's no other agencies at this point changing the design. And really what we were waiting on is just the blessing of this entrance here. Any, any questions from the board on that? Okay? I'm going to put it back in the corner so we don't wipe out, okay?
Can we move on to the.
Yeah, can we see it, please?
Okay, so again, everybody, please.
Well, can we, so we can also sit down too as we're speaking? Thank you.
Again, if there are any more questions in three minutes. And remarks again, just reminder, it's regarding the application. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
In August 2024.
First name?
Hannah.
Address? Municipality.
My name is Hannah Hurley, my address is 53 York Ave, Saratoga Springs.
Saratoga Springs, okay, yeah.
In August of 2021, I started volunteering my time in housing advocacy locally. In just a few weeks of being active with local groups, I met the tenants of the Saratoga Lake Manufactured Housing Park, and I had my first call as a fight for. Over the course of the next three years, we worked with local statewide and national advocate organizations to protect the residents of the park. We used the local media to make the public aware of what was happening. The tenants have diligently reported and documented every infraction. The admission case against the lone tenant that remains was dismissed by your judge. We did everything that we were supposed to do. I still remember when I finally got the call from the Attorney General's office that they were aware of what was happening and would be working on the case. I was elated to let the tenants know that we won, as surely a case with this many blatant violations would be that all the hard work had paid off. As we're at the public hearing for the destruction of the Saratoga Lake View Manufactured Housing Park, the problem was not solved. For years, the landlord has continued to violate tenants' rights and walk over every regulatory board that has jurisdiction over housing and revenue of boat and RV storage. Since 2019, the average rent in Saratoga County has risen by 27.2%. In our county, we do not have a permanent shelter, and the one temporary shelter we do have has a waitlist that reaches over 60 people per cot. The cost to both buy a house and rent property is going up, and the stock of cost for housing for low income is going down, and the ability to access a shelter is going down. From a town here, I've seen this town board and our legal system act as a pay-to-play platform without consideration for the, for the people that you complain with. We have allowed the landlords to push families out of their home and terrify the ones that demand their rights that are supposed to be given to them as citizens. The final nail in the coffin will be approving this building permit and plowing over the memories of the injustice that took to expand boat and RV storage stock. The permit must be rejected and the extension should be stopped, while the manufactured housing park should be restored. Across the nation, there are people calling out for more housing, increased housing, housing reforms, public housing. But in Saratoga, no one is calling out for boat and RV storage.
The three minutes is on.
No one wants boat and RV storage.
Good evening, Chairman, members, thank you for coming to speak. My name is Obama Algenaro, I am the Secretary of Direct to a nonprofit organization that advocates for the town's health and identity. I'm here to testify.
Citizenship work.
I'm sorry, I live at, our office is in Gardner, New York.
Where?
Gardner. Gardner, New York, which is part of the Mid Hudson Valley, so I'm about two hours away from there. But I am pleased to be here to do this testimony. I visited Lakeview Mobile Home Park in September 2021, invited by Ms. Ms. Coppins. I had the encounter of the Indian community, which looks a beautiful, the green, the trees, and the, and the, and the, and the. When I visited Ms. Coppins six months later, the place looked like a void zone. Trees were cut halfway down, dumpsters and garbage all over the place. I was speaking with a neighbor, and we parked on Mr. Giovanni, no respect that I say his name, approached me, approached me and Ms. Coppins and the neighbor, and was very, a bit rude, but that's besides the point. And me and Ms. Coppins walked away, and the park manager saw the problems. I felt very harassed when I'm in a public place where I was invited to. The fight in this community, it was a beautiful community, it was heartbreaking to me, not only as an advocate, but as a community, and a mom myself. It was a beautiful little park, it had trees, kids were playing, there was about 12 homes in there. Six months later, it looked like a void zone. So I understand he wants a permit, or is telling the votes. My thought and my recommendations is he's gotten cease and desist letters, he's gotten letters from the AGs or others, like ACR. These people have been intimidated to leave the park, the park now is only two people standing there. They have no running water, they have no decent water to even live, the end of 2025. This part, I guess, permitted to him, one made to think that he's going to come fight and win it to 2026, let everything that's gone in this park fall. So I want to thank you for your time, and if you're willing to take up a challenge with the Attorney General's office, with all the respect I say. I wish you luck, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak and to submit.
Hi, my name is Darlene McGraw. I live in the city of Mechanicville, but I would appreciate if you guys could ask people not necessarily to put their municipality, because what happens if somebody said that they were homeless, where would they go? Okay, well, that's, that's okay. I'm, I'm speaking, you're not speaking, Mr. Chairman. This town has a website that is not compliant, so obviously, if it's not ADA compliant, that also mentions how scummy this town is. And I, this is the first time I ever stepped foot in this town hall, so that actually, actually gives a great experience on how this town is. This property owner has said how they cannot comply with the town zoning laws, because that's what has been previously mentioned with the zoning building inspector. I trike along this Route 9P very often. I don't know if you guys have ever seen me, but obviously, you guys never come to your own darn town that you live in, because I spend a lot of my time in this town. And you guys, if you've never seen me, you guys should follow more time in your town and not be in your darn house more. I really do not want to be seeing a business that has done so much wrong to the community. We need to make sure we have fair housing, fair housing rules, and you know what? If this property owner can't comply, and if you guys can't comply with the federal law and with our state laws, you know what? Welcome, here I am, here's the law. Okay, this ain't going to be the first time you're seeing me in this damn building, welcome. Piers. Oh, you're more than welcome.
My name is Paul, he lives in Hudson Avenue, Brooklyn, Paul. I want to read this. Three million dollar home on Campion Lane, on the shores of Long Island, Lake Long Island. Perhaps he's found his garden loo in Gil Kaufman. And perhaps he's quick to her courage, stand up to your efforts, either way, the humans cross and expand your boat and RV condo facility on the site of a mobile home park. Sacrificing the homes of human beings to provide a home for the airstream, catalyst, touring culture, the travel realm, FS 605, 300, with spot RV, or perhaps the cigarette 15, 52 under speedboat, certainly more lucrative trade-off. And will ease the burden of needing payments on your 5100 square foot four bedroom, four bathroom, on Long Island Lake. Not to speak of providing sweet drinks for you and your clients, knowing that their material investments will be safe and secure, and their ownership experiments are pleasurable. I know I sleep better at night. Is this a moral issue? You can't write this. Low-income residents stand in the way of this man's profits. It's a struggle for some to just put a roof over their head against a wealthy businessman who wants to sweep them away in place of a home for rich people's toys. Whose side are you on? Imagine if Mr. Giovanni were confronted with a boat, RV, and RV storage facility going up next to his $3 million house. He'd fight, and he'd win. This, this county board has a right and an obligation to put people's homes, a mobile home park, in the rest of the community, before a storage facility for luxury boats. Everyone here knows the condition of this. He was faced with an agreement he signed in which the property would remain a mobile park for five years. This agreement was made with the New York State Division of Housing and Communities Renewal. You all know that as the elephant in the room, but you don't speak about it. In 2023, that same agency again clarified the agreement to include providing renewal leases for any tenant, maintaining essential services, and abstaining from harassment of tenants until 2026. I wonder whether they put that language in there. Do you think they knew something? Mr. Giovanni's response in his testimony in art form. The park has to be empty and unbridled. There is no one to be engaged to find. If there's not a clear indication of Giovanni's intent, we know nothing about intention.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brittany Allison. I currently reside at 76 Broad Lane in Staten Island, but I also own lots of, uh, at 14389 Mobile Home Park. So, um, I was living in the park in 2021 when Mr. Giovanni purchased the park. During his purchase, he realized that if he didn't do the whole right-of-firisk refusal thing, that he would have the ability to buy the park out of him. Once he realized this was an actual possibility, he started getting people involved. There was a real possibility that we could get grants and possibly buy this out from under him. He decided to go right of refusal. He signed a paper that said he would not use this for five years. He did that knowing that he'd be able to harass people until evening early. I am currently in a battle with him.
He's taken his, yes.
For eviction, because he refuses to accept my rent check. It's going to New York State Court of Appeals tomorrow morning. If it isn't up to the town to keep him from doing this five-year agreement that he signed, is needed, whose responsibility is it to keep him from obliterating his agreement and keeping us from the ability to purchase this park, which we could have had, but he did raise that, and then continued to harass all the, uh, everyone that lived there until evening. So it is down to the home that I own currently, um, and, you know, and you're the last ones left. I've been afforded the opportunity to be able to put up with Mr. Giovanni's harassment most of the other residents couldn't. And really appreciate you guys put that into consideration with approving this. I get to buy the other thing, but fine. If you guys could wait until the five years are up, that's what my ask is.
My name is Chris Ballerano. I'm in Albany. I'm meeting with this letter on behalf of former tenant, uh, Mr. Giovanni. Hello, I'd like to make a order of two things. First, Mr. Giovanni is bound by a legal contract with New York State and New York State Building Property Law to maintain Lakeview Mobile Home Park. He's not going to change the use of the park. The board has received documentation that proves that through the certification that he signed. Second, the planning board may have been required to hear Mr. Giovanni if both of the planning and zoning boards are never under any obligation to provide guarantees in school laws. Third, my understanding that as part of the seeker, the planning board is required to consider how the plan will affect the residents of the town. Mr. Giovanni has already shown you this. Both New York State HCR and Office of Attorney General have provided written instructions to Mr. Giovanni for ordering him to stop harassing town residents who live on the property. Mr. Giovanni has entered the premises of town residents without providing proper notification, displaced large dumpsters in the driveway of town residents for months at a time, has had garbage trucked into the property, dumped on the ground under the dumpsters, and dumped large piles of garbage throughout the course of months. He treated the property like a landfill, or his personal dumping ground for garbage. He's interrupted essential services to town residents without notice on numerous situations. Those services have included electricity, water, and internet. Mr. Giovanni has demolished homes without permits. Newsnight articles have stated earlier applied that Mr. Giovanni harassed town residents and leaving their homes. Mr. Giovanni's plan has already displaced multiple town residents. Those residents have included firefighters, children, elderly people, people with disabilities. Some of the people who have been displaced have become without homes, homeless folks. Some of the remaining town residents of the property are healthcare workers. Mr. Giovanni has already shown how his current and future plans will affect the town of Saratoga. Fourth, Mr. Giovanni has previously proceeded with his plan without permits. Town of Saratoga Department enforcement officer Gil Albert has reported in his comments stating that he will not enforce any code violations. It all makes me wonder why anyone is even in this room. What's the point of anyone, when anyone can use whatever they want without proper enforcement? It appears all to be a waste paper, a waste of taxpayer's money and the time of anyone involved. There appears to actually be no reason to even discuss permits. Mr. Giovanni has already proven he'll proceed to let them. Gil's conference has already stated he will not enforce town mobiles to go without permits. So in closing, Mr. Giovanni has contracts with the state that is bound by law to not change the use of the property, the right contract is completed. The town is under no obligation to go against that contract or the state laws that govern it. It's my opinion that Mr. Giovanni has already shown his past, current, and prospective future behaviors regarding town residents and the town laws, that his plans for the property are not good for the town of Saratoga, and has already impacted the entire town on some levels. Considering all of this, it's not only my opinion that the project should not be listed in the plan, but there are also issues beyond the no reason to require permits of anyone. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandon Howell. My head is at 4 East View Drive, Mrs. Tyler, Waterbury. I'll be speaking on behalf of John R. Ashton, uh, address 122 Cedar Bluff Road, Stillwater, New York. Dear members of the planning board, I am a town resident in proximity to Saratoga Lakeview Mobile Home Park, the park, and right to express my firm opposition to any further consideration of permits related to the proposed change in use of the park until the expiration of the legal holdover period, the remaining tenants in March 2026. This opposition is grounded in the legal protections afforded to the park's remaining tenants under Real Property Law, RPL Section 233. The current owner executed a certification in March 2021, explicitly agreeing to maintain the park's operations and refraining from pursuing a change in use for a minimum of five years, as required by RPL 233, and is affirmed by the New York State Homes and Communities Renewal HCR. The HCR clarified in correspondence dated September 26, 2023, that the owner is legally obligated to continue providing renewal leases, maintain essential services, and abstain from harassment of tenants until the agreed-upon period. Despite these obligations, the owner and/or his agents have engaged in a documented pattern of harassment, neglect, and intimidation to force owner-performer residents, as detailed in the complaints and investigations conducted by the DHR and the New York State Attorney General's Office. These actions include, but are not limited to, failure to provide renewal leases as required under RPL 233, and persistent harassment and threats aimed at tenants to coerce their relocation. Under RPL 233, tenants are protected from eviction proceedings related to a change in use for a minimum of two years following proper notice. In this case, the certified agreement extending the operation of the park to March 2026 supersedes the statutory minimum. Additionally, HCR has explicitly directed the owner to comply with these protections and maintain the park's operations, in part, the correspondence from the HCR reaches follows. It has come to the HCR's attention that you are failing to abide by your provisions of RPL 233 at Saratoga Lakeview Mobile Home Park, which you have acquired in March of 2021. Such violations include, but are not limited to, change in use requirements as set forth in RPL 233. This letter is also meant to remind you of your legal obligation to fulfill your dues under the park's contract to purchase and the certification that you signed on March 31, 2021, prohibiting a change in use of the park for 60 months, or five years, from the date of your purchase of the park on March 31, 2021. A copy of the certification is enclosed in your records. HCR also considers you bound by RPL 233's stipend requirement for change in use. In order to comply with the RPL 233, I appreciate your attention to this community matter and remain available to provide additional information or documentation.
We already have that later on file. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Lauren, uh, from the street of Saratoga, New York. In March of 2021, Mr. Giovanni executed a certification agreeing to maintain Saratoga Lakeview Mobile Home Park operations and refraining from pursuing a change in use for a minimum of five years, as required by RPL Section 233 and as affirmed by the New York State Division of Homes and Communities of Mobile Home Parks, DHR. In a bulletin, the letter dated 9/26/23, DHR said necessary to reinforce that the owner is legally obligated to continue providing renewal leases, maintain essential services, and abstain from harassment of tenants until the agreed-upon period ends. However, Mr. Giovanni has blatantly acted in a manner that is the exact opposite of his legal obligation to his tenants. Over the course of 2021 to 2022, behaviors of Mr. Giovanni and his agents are consistent with harassment and include, but are not limited to, criminal activities, manipulation with tenants, and a threatening, misogynistic, and intimidating manner, which could be described as harassment, and unsuccessful attempts to make this confident of what he interprets as retaliatory accusations. This led to the New York State Attorney General to get involved and actively investigate. Failure to renew leases and threats aimed at tenants to force their relocation, neglect of essential services such as water maintenance, park maintenance, and demolition of mobile homes without permits. Repeated use of construction and dumpsters in a way that appears to torment tenants and create disruptions to their right to peaceful enjoyment of their homes. Tenants, New York State, advocacy groups, and the media are in possession of extensive documentation of allegations of what can be described as harassment in text, photo, and video form, which leads me to ask respectfully, if Mr. Giovanni gets permits, given his history, what makes the planning board think he's going to comply with the rules mass? Giovanni has failed to maintain his property. He has violated code. Why would you reward this by granting permits? The New York Attorney, New York State Attorney General has asserted tenants that Mr. Giovanni would not develop while they lived there. If the planning board is concerned about a lawsuit from Mr. Giovanni, are they prepared to deal with the consequences from New York State? Have you consulted with Christopher Lee from the Attorney General's Office? And if so, when? Giovanni has proven he will not keep his word. In addition, proven his willingness to neglect his property and retaliate against tenants. He should not be granted any further permits until after agreed-upon time in 2026, during which he can legally close the park, per his own certified statement that he would keep the damaged park intact until 2026. I implore you to resist and enable him to break his words further violating tenants' rights. Tenants who have had legitimate concern based on his previous behaviors that granting Mr. Giovanni permits will only greenlight more of his behavior. The right of housing is a human right that guarantees everyone the right to live in a safe, affordable, and habitable home. This right is recognized in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the International Terminant of Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights. I implore you to recognize it today. Signed, Linda, Concerned Citizens, State of New York.
Thank you.
There are all those multiple properties that you guys.
Thank you.
This is Anne from Long Island Hill. And I've been on the streets for a number of years, and I am just really curious as to why this board would reward the behavior we've been hearing about tonight by granting this permit when it's not even needed yet? Because obviously, Mr. Giovanni is not implementing these plans for another year, right? And especially because the current tenants who remain in that Mobile Home Park need the year, a year at least, of, you know, bandwidth, not fighting against these bullying behaviors, but rather they need time to make their plans for what comes next because they're clearly going to be evicted in a year. It's clear that the town has already decided that they prioritize those over people and affordable housing. But given that that's going to happen, one year, which is what he agreed to originally anyway, should be given to these folks for at least a year of peace to figure out what comes next for them. Like, why do they have to worry that even in this year that they're supposed to have left, they're going to be dealing with more of the same because they're going to get bullied out of their homes early? It's, it's, it's appalling to me, the message that the town would send by granting this permit now.
Good evening. My name is Meeher, and I am a tenant organizer with United Tenants of Albany. My address is Teesbury Place, Albany, New York. And UTA has made aware of this landlord's treatment of tenants, and we're really alarmed by the harassment that we believe that this landlord subjected the tenants to. Do you care a lot for it already? For this includes threats, failure to renew leases, a neglect of basic and essential needs like clean drinking water, and the demolition of mobile homes without a permit. I hope you all understand the turmoil that this landlord put tenants through, violating their rights to the point where the Attorney General and the New York State Department of Homes and Community Renewal has had to step in. We also get a lot of calls at UTA from tenants, hundreds and hundreds of hundreds a year. And we do get calls from up in Saratoga as well. And most of those calls from Saratoga are from mobile home parks. They're from mobile home tenants who have been facing similar harassment. And I just want to make it clear that this, right now, poses a really dangerous precedent for how these landlords interact with their tenants. Some of the examples I could tell you, and they really hurt me because it's absolutely disgusting. Mobile home tenants who are women who spent dating domestic violence being evicted without proper notice. A man who had surgery on his lungs was told to get out after four days, four days after surgery. If we let this be the precedent where a bad landlord gets rewarded by the state, what are we doing? What are we going to do when this happens to another tenant? Another mobile home park? There are a lot of really tight-knit mobile home park communities in Saratoga, and that honestly is what makes Saratoga such a beautiful place to live, right? Those are the tenants that make Saratoga what it is, that live and work and breathe in Saratoga. And those residents deserve, like everyone else has been saying, a safe place to live. They deserve stability. They deserve to stay in their communities with the people that they know and the neighbors that they've known for decades. Are you really going to reward a landlord who has purposely targeted and pressured his tenants? If a bad actor wanted something badly enough, are we saying that all you have to do is start suing the city and the planning board, and you get to do whatever you want? Do we really want to continue wasting taxpayer time and dollars and energy into doing all of this? We should be prioritizing making this place a better place for the people that live here. Make it a place where people can work and live without worrying about harassment every day from their landlord. So please, take all of that to it in a cap and really, really realize that this is not even just one situation of a bad landlord, but this is going to be many, many, many bad landlords that are going to make your lives more difficult and ruin a lot of communities and lives for other tenants in Saratoga.
My name is Deo Kaufman. I live on stolen land at 1438 Route 9P in Saratoga. The following is my opinion. The tragedy in LA County has raised public awareness of the consequences of insatiable greed combined with decades of irresponsible resource management and development decisions that prioritize profit over common sense. The role played by businesses and municipalities will forever be seared into public consciousness, and future generations will view those like the Resnick's and the bureaucrats who catered to them despite public outcry, not as the cause of the fires, but as accelerants. If you greenlight Jovanov's development, knowing he has already gone against his own certified statement, disregarded code requirements, and harassed tenants into leaving their homes, the precedent you set and its impact on the town will have ramifications for years to come. Residents years from now will look back on the choice to pander to whoever sues you into submission and consider your legacy as selling the town to the lowest bidder with the slimiest lawyer. You don't need a seeker to find out if Jovanov's development will harm the community, as you've heard his actions already have. He'll boast about donating the land to the fire department, but that means nothing if he also told a former tenant to set a fire on my deck. Co-signing this project not only signals your disregard for the state's position on this matter, but implies that you've endorsed Jovanov's tactics, including the sentiments expressed herein, communicated in the course of his business operation, some of these statements including the A with R slur, sexist language, and the homophobic X slur used in the communication that I'm about to give you. Giving in to Jovanov means you reward developers who ignore code. You endorse harassment and displacing tenants, some of whom are volunteer firefighters, families, disabled people, a person living with terminal brain tumors, to name a few. If that is who you are as a planning board, and as individuals, and as business owners, make your legacy clear. But when you've allowed developers to subject residents to these scorched earth tactics, the ones who will choke on the blowback of your decisions will be you, your children, and grandchildren, and only the poor people will already be gone.
I know you're bored and tired of hearing all of us.
Oh, no.
No, but that's the body language we're getting from you.
I will comment.
That is the body language we're giving you as the chairperson.
You don't have the floor.
It's okay, I don't have the floor, I know. I'm gonna be quiet, I just have to think that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you say how you would, Nora?
Good evening, board. I'm Andrew Clark with Mr. Jovanov. I just wanted to point a clarification. Do you want the applicant to address any comments on the record? And prior to the close of the public hearing, we just wanted to submit some letters in support that were gathered in furtherance of the application. Does it matter who I submit?
No, you can.
Thank you. I just didn't want to. I'm not making comments just if you add.
Yeah, no. All right. All right, if there's no other comments, then I propose the public hearing. But, okay, now the public hearing's over, but let me just make a couple of comments here. Just to clarify, and then I'll basically address the body. First of all, what the planning board does here, okay, we go through and we evaluate special use permits, okay, if they're lawful by the town, okay, we do subdivisions, and we do site plan proof. That's what we do here at the planning. We're not a compliance group, meaning that like, you know, we don't go out and, ma'am, public hearing's over.
Your planning.
Ah, ma'am, the public hearing's over, ma'am, the public hearing's over. Thank you. Okay, those are the three things to do. Those are state statutes.
But it's a planning.
Wait, ma'am, I'm speaking, ma'am. The public hearing is over. Okay, thank you. All right? That's what the planning board does here. You guys have a tenant landlord dispute. We don't do tenant landlord disputes. You might have a very legitimate tenant landlord dispute. I don't dispute that. The problem is, though, that's not what we do here. We have no authority to get involved with your tenant landlord dispute, okay? You can contact the attorney general, you can sue them, you can do what other tenants, if they were living in a building and you were trying to throw them out even though they have a lease, you could go ahead, you can go ahead and take all those actions, but the thing is, this is not what we do here, okay?
But you have a bulletin from HCR that says that until 2026.
Stop, stop, or, or.
You can do your stupid all you want, you have a bulletin from HCR that says until 2026.
This, this representing the fact, stop, stop.
You, I gave you a copy of it, what am I misrepresenting? You have a copy of the bulletin.
We don't address that here, okay? We don't address that here.
New York State Department of Homes and Community Real Estate has issued a bulletin.
That's not on our prevy here.
So you're gonna go against this case?
Ma'am, I'm gonna stop and clear this room, okay? If, basically, you're gonna continue.
Are you going to keep lying? HCR has said it is a mobile home park until 2026, and you have a copy of it, so you can lie all you want and pretend that I'm misrepresenting facts, even though you have the paper right in front of you.
You're misrepresenting what we do, and, and that's the issue, okay? That's the issue with him, all right? That's the issue with him. Ma'am, I'm not taking questions. The public hearing is over. You guys had the opportunity to speak. I let everybody speak.
Yeah, you fell asleep.
The public hearing, because the public hearing is over.
I think I know people have questions.
The public hearing is over, ma'am. The public hearing is over. We got your input, okay? And I'm giving you, okay, what the planning board does.
The planning board should have a permit to get where the.
Ma'am, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, sorry. The planning board, like I said, does certain things, okay? What you want to do is not what the planning board can do for you.
So who should we go?
We evaluate, we evaluate, we evaluate.
We can deny permits. I see you do it.
We evaluate the special, whether this property can be used under a special use permit right now, and under our, our zoning code, that can be used for that, okay? And we have to go through, we have a checklist, okay? We don't make the checklist up. This is basically mandated by the state of New York, okay? What, what's the procedure that needs to go through to go ahead and approve a special use permit? We go down through a checklist, that's what we do here.
There's no.
That's what we do here.
Whatever people.
The Attorney General.
There's morality attached to all of it.
The Attorney, the Attorney General, if that's where your beef is, then you should go to the Attorney General.
We have, we're the one. We don't have to grant a permit while the state is saying nothing can happen to that land until 2026.
So this is all about money. Money talks, bullshit walks.
It's about who sued them first.
No, it's so that they can get frickin' money.
We're gonna move on, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments, and, okay, we're gonna move on to the next step, okay? So we have every, we have all.
It's about money.
We have all information here to basically go through and see. Now, we won't be able to take any action tonight on, on the actual project itself, because we need to hear back from the county, all right? So the information that needs to be submitted that the county asked for, needs to go back to county, I believe, on February 2nd, all right, which they have a, a county board, Saratoga County Planning Board meeting on the 20th of February, and then we will, we are going to have our regular board meeting on February 26th. We'll be back here, okay? So, but we won't be able to take any final action on this planet until we hear back from the county based on the submissions we have.
Do you have any water?
We will, we will do secret, ma'am, please don't interrupt them.
No, I'm asking if you have any water.
I don't know. You'll have to find out.
Cause yours is dirty, like your shit.
We can, we can do secrets, ma'am, okay? We have enough information, and we just have to wait back to hear from the county members to submit. Well, Lauren, would you read this for me?
Question of the practice question, questions. Row one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted Vandy's Plan of Building Regulations?
No.
Will the proposed act result in a change in the use or intensity of use of on air?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or effective infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkers?
Yes.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy or fail to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action attack existing public private water supplies or public private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed act result in an adverse change to natural resources, i.e. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality for our fauna?
Yes.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential pre-erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create an impact to environmental resources or human health?
Yes.
Cause there are a bunch of liars and cowards, that's why.
I can't do anything.
We're not recording here, guys. You can leave the meeting, please.
Gil said there's no evidence.
I'm a woman, I'm not a man. I don't got balls.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to declare a negative secret. Can I get a second? Thank you very much. All in favor? Anybody opposed?
I'm a female.
We can take no further action on this application, we need to hear back to the public. We're good, thank you, gentlemen.
I'm a female, not a man.